All right, so with that, um, are there any planning board member comments on correspondence?
So there's this note about the 500K from Mast dot. What, what is that for? Is that?
That is for the construction of sidewalks on Crescent Street.
Oh, excellent, excellent.
Very nice.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
I actually had a comment on that. Can I, want me to say something about that now, Lori or?
Sure.
Yeah, so I just want to say that I did stop over there the other day and walked that whole stretch from the old fire station to uh where the, uh, the apartments are there. And certainly there are some challenges. Uh, there's some narrow spots. There's some places where there are retaining walls of various materials that probably need to be reinforced or replaced. I'm sure the engineers have looked at that. Uh, but I'll note two things. One, it looked like there are even more challenges on the other side of the road.
Yes.
So, so I, you know, I, I think the side that, that you're looking at is probably the right side. The other comment is where we talked about the, the crossing uh, to get across the street. Uh, it certainly is true that the sight line from the, I think it would be the northern side is pretty limited. However, if the crosswalk has flashing lights on both sides, the other side of the road, the south side of the road with the bend has the advantage that it's a much better sight line. So I think that the crosswalk with the, the, the flashing lights would be considerably safer because people talked about how it was a challenge to cross at that spot. Considerably safer with the lights on the other side because that would warn the traffic farther down the road coming from the Acton side, uh, that there's pedestrians in the roadway.
All right, thanks, John. Other planning board member comments on correspondence?
Yeah, Valerie, did you get a response back from Mike Hodgman?
Yes, I did. Um, so I went out to, um, the cane land on, where did we go? We, we visited the cane land on Thursday together. Uh, Michael and I went over there just to look at what the erosion looked like because one of the, uh, Gleeson Dale, um, residents had let us know at the Marlboro Road Public Forum last week that there was quite a bit of sedimentation going on to the Bell's property over there. So, um, we took a look at it. Um, I went over there today and it looks like he has cleaned it up. Um, though, you know, I do want to make sure that work continues this summer and that we're on, um, I'm sorry, that we're on track to, um, uh, to finish that project, um, this summer. They really only have a couple of days left of work. Um, it looks like, um, they ordered a head wall for a precast head wall for the culvert extension. And they're also doing a longer retention wall than, um, uh, then was on the plan simply because the guard rail there is, um, is kind of coming loose a little bit. So we want to make sure that the full length of guard rail is, is really in there well.
All right. Any other planning board member comments on correspondence? All right, if not, um, I'll ask if there's any public input on things that are not currently on our agenda. So not to do with our public hearings. Um, but is there any other public input, um, on other business? Okay, if not, any planning board member comments, Meg?
Yeah, did, uh, you hear back from the Stow House of Pizza?
No, I have not yet. Um, I know that they are, are open again. They were closed for a few weeks in July. Um, but it looks like they're back open, so, um, hope to hear back soon.
Good luck.
Thank you.
All right, any other planning board member updates? All right, Valerie?
Um, so just a few things tonight. Um, I just wanted to note that the zoning board of appeals met last night and they approved, um, a decision for the special permit and site plan approval for the Branda Library Extension as well as the variance for the library. Um, so Michael is working diligently on cleaning up those, um, those decisions. Um, and, uh, we'll hopefully get that, um, to the town clerk, um, in the coming days. So at least that project is, is moving forward. Um, I also wanted to note that the folks, uh, with Joanne Drive, um, Chuck Black will come to the planning board's meeting next week to talk about, um, street trees. Uh, we met with him on site last week or the week before, um, to take a look at the progress that they've made, um, and also chat a little bit more about the history of the conversation around street trees. Um, so hopefully he'll, he'll bring forward, um, both an agreement with, um, the uh, current buyers of one of the last lots, um, as well as a plan for where, um, additional street trees will be placed um, next week. Aside from that, I really didn't have anything. Um, I did, yeah, I just wanted to mention that we got that complete streets grant um, and that the cane land is, is moving forward, but I think, I think that's about it unless I've forgotten anything else.
Valerie, do you have any, uh, new information about the, the old gas station in Lower Village and what's going on over there? So I did stop by over there too, to look at the pretty big hole in the back of that.
Yes, yep. So, um, I've got to credit our building commissioner, um, for stopping work over there and chatting with the owner. Um, so I am anticipating a special permit filing to come in. Soon I know that the new owner is looking to put in a car detail shop over there. Um, so hopefully we'll, we'll get them permitted and, um, allow them to continue work.
So that means, um, car wash stuff?
It's a, um, a car detail shop. Um, so I, I believe car washes haven't, have not been allowed through zoning, um, though, um, the car detail shop is for his lot. Um, so with the filing of the approval not required plan, um, in the spring, he was able to freeze the allowed uses for his parcel for, for a few more years. So he, he on that one site is, is allowed to do a detail shop, um, through a special permit.
Wait, could you just say that one more time, please?
Sure. So the new zoning that we passed, um, through town meeting in May does not allow car detail shops. However, because he filed an approval not required plan, um, he was able to freeze allowed uses on site. So that is another, um, uh, tool, uh, for, for developers to have. So we've mostly only seen A and Rs used in Stowe for, um, you know, splitting up lots or dissolving, um, lot lines between parcels. Um, but that can also be used to, to freeze uses. So knowing that we were about to potentially change what's allowed in Lower Village, he went ahead and filed.
So we have to leave that forever?
For three years. Um, and then if he's able, I mean, I reasonably couldn't, can assume that he would be able to get through the special permit process, um, shortly. Um, so that then it would essentially be a grandfathered use after then.
So Megan, it makes it basically means he's operating under the bylaws that were in place prior to the recent bylaws.
We are still able to, um, use the, um, I believe, use the, the site standards of the new bylaw. It's simply the use that he froze.
Um, Debbie?
And he can wash cars, but we are not having, he is not having a car wash, correct?
That's correct. Yes, I, I, my understanding is that some amount of, of car washing is needed as part of a detail shop, but it wouldn't be like open to the public to use. Yeah.
Thanks.
For example, there is a detail, another detail shop in town over by Quinn Electric, if you're wondering. All right, um, any other planning board member or planner, um, updates?
I just wanted to give a shout out to Small Farm. Um, I, I read an article where they are belong to a group of eastern Massachusetts farmers and they have, um, periodic meetings. And Small Farm, uh, like a different farm will host the meetings at different times. And so Small Farm hosted the meeting for the eastern farmers, um, just recently. And, um, what they did is they chose and the, the whoever's the host farmer can choose their topic. So Small Farm, um, chose to talk about how they market and the way that they believe, um, they're comfortable with marketing was just, um, to create, um, um, produce that looks beautiful as well. I mean, they trim the edges off of things. They, they wash everything. They get all the old leaves out of the way and that is their marketing plan is to have just this beautiful produce that's available. And I just, I thought it was just really cool that they, um, that they have this kind of progressive, like young view of how to market themselves and how they want to produce food that's healthy and beautiful. So I was just really impressed with the things that they do.
All right. Any other planning board members or planner updates? If not, I see we do have a public hand up. Um, Dorothy, did you have a question?
Um, so I just wanted to make sure I understood. So at the mobile site they're proposing, it's not like a drive-through car wash, but they'll be able to wash cars themselves, like by hand or something and detailing them. Okay, so just a heads up, um, I did research pertaining to the car washing because that was part of the proposed usage, uh, including the, with the used car sales, not that they were going to have a car wash, but they were gonna get the cars ready. And, um, a business of any sort cannot discharge water in Stowe from car runoff, like you can wash your car, but a business can't. They would have to have it in a system that collects all of the water and have it picked up and transported out. Can't go into septic. It can't go into the ground. So, and that, that, uh, passed, uh, the board, the local board of health looked into that, like when I brought that up. So the remedy that was done for the used car place was, uh, in their license, it says that they promised that they don't wash the cars there. They drive them all out of town to get them washed. But it's not, unless something's changed, it's not allowed. It's to protect the groundwater. So you might check on more details, but.
I'm sure we'll get details as the application comes in.
They might not happen, but just so that you're aware of that. Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right. We have a long 16 minutes left before the public hearing. Does anybody have any other updates?
Um, it may be useful to use this time to set, um, meeting dates in October.
Okay.
Understanding that Karen is not here, so we can, um, ask her. Um, pull up the calendar. So we can get back to our more typical first three Tuesdays, um, if October 3rd, 10th and 11th work for people.
I guess my question is really going to be about Columbus Day because we typically stay away from long holidays, but I'll, I'll open it up to the board to see what your thoughts are.
I prefer not to do that because that's when my college kids have big sports things. We travel to them.
I will be gone. Oh, you go, John.
I was just gonna say I'm open all month, but I, you know, defer to people who have things going, you know, that'll be fine.
Um, this is a tough month for me. I'm going to be gone, uh, the 10th and the 17th.
Yeah, it sounds like the third can work.
I guess Valerie, do you want to set the, do we want to set the third, the 17th and 24th, and we'll see what we would have to do if Meg is not here on the 17th?
Sure. That sounds good.
Okay, so, so what'd we say? The third, the 17th and the 24th? Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, all right. I think I saw Roy Miller. Did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. I was on last week and I missed this in the public discussion tonight. But last week I had asked about the process and hearings. And you described that they're for public information and to let people know what the, uh, proposals are and so forth.
Public forums.
Public forum, I'm sorry. And I, you also, uh, recommended that if, um, if we had feelings, uh, had opinions one way or the other, we should put them in writing because that's more powerful than you publish the list. I saw on the website, you published a list of responses received. So my question tonight is, one, I don't want to talk about the issue on the mill, but I was wondering, what's the process after we finish tonight? Will you be describing that so we all know?
Sure, I will definitely be going through what the procedure is, but the one general statement I'll make about hearings, which tonight we have two hearings, not forums.
Oh, hearings.
When we have hearings, those are a response to an application put before us.
Yes.
And when we do hearings, it's a much more structured process. In other words, we have a certain amount of time in which to respond to an application.
I see.
And any input has to come to us while the public hearing is open.
Yes.
In other words, once a public hearing is closed, we can no longer take in any new information. So even if you, anyone sends us anything, we cannot consider that in our decision. Um, so the whole point of a public hearing is to open a public hearing, take in all the input.
Yeah.
Close the public hearing and then deliberate. Um, and so what I anticipate happening tonight, we have two public hearings. We will open them.
Yeah.
Um, I'll go through a bit of procedure when we, when we get to 7:30. Um, and then we can, we will either continue the hearing, which basically what that means is we want to leave it open because we think there's more information to take in.
Yeah.
Or we can choose to close the hearing, meaning that would close it to any further input. So when we get to the end of each hearing, um, time spot allotment, um, we will have the choice to either close or continue. Now, mind you, the planning board can certainly recommend whether we continue or close, but it is really up to the applicant if they want to allow us to continue, if we ask to continue.
I see.
Now, for example, if, if we wanted to continue, but they want to close, we would close the hearing and we would not be able to take in any new information and we would have to make a decision with the information taken in thus far. Um, so I just wanted to, um, make that clarification for you. So my guess is when we open the hearing, I'll go through some procedure of what I anticipate to happen during the hearing.
Okay.
And then at the end of the allotted time, we will have a discussion of whether we want, want to continue or close the hearing.
I see.
So therefore, back to your question.
Yeah.
Um, if we continue the hearings, you could then go away and write something more and send it in because it's still open. However, if we close the hearing, you would not be able to go away and provide us additional after the fact.
I see, yeah. And it, if you keep it open, it's not for seven minutes. It's for maybe a few days or.
No, in fact, if, if we keep it open, we will specify tonight when we will come back together to continue.
I see. Okay, okay. And you continue in the same format.
Correct.
Of by Zoom or something like that.
That is correct.
Laurie, this is very helpful. And even if you're gonna do it again, it's, it's doubly helpful. Thank you.
All right, great. All right, we have nine minutes. And so for everybody on the, on the call, we cannot start until 7:30. That's the whole thing about a public hearing. We stated when we would start and we don't want to start before that. Bill Byron, did you have a question?
I have a statement, a comment. Well done, Laurie.
Thank you. Um, Charlie Hartford?
Hi all, I have a, a unrelated question, but I think it's related to planning board. Um, just wondered if I could get an update on status of hiring a consultant to work with the comprehensive master plan committee.
Oh, sure, Valerie?
Yes, I'm sorry. I, um, I saw your email, Charlie. Um, it's been, it's been a busy day, so.
No worries.
Yep. Can I, um, I'll, I'll respond to you, um, either after this call tonight or tomorrow if possible. Um, we, we do have a consultant, um, under contract.
Good, thank you.
All right.
Sorry, that didn't take longer.
No. We have eight minutes. If anybody has any comments or questions? And just remember again, we can't start till 7:30, so it forces us to sit here and stare at one another, um, until that time. Um.
Did we, did we figure out, um, a restaurant?
I'll send out an email.
Well, good.
Yeah.
Hey, I did my piece on plugging the small farm.
All right, I am gonna just run real quick to check the temperature on my thermostat. I will be right back.
Nancy, did you get your barn painted?
No, the weather hasn't been ideal, unfortunately.
It's true.
I look at it, I look at it and say, when am I going to finish this? I'm, I'm a little torn with how I'm going to get the high parts, either a really tall ladder or I'm going to rent the stanchion thing.
But you put the brush on a long stick?
I do, I have an extender pole.
Oh, you do?
But fully extended is hard to maneuver, but I stood in the bed of our pickup truck and got one side done.
Oh, that's an idea. There you go.
Yes.
Hey Nancy, let me ask offline. Um, I might know somebody that you could use, um, some easily, easy to assemble, um, staging. And you could use that. Do you want me to ask?
No, too scary.
Really?
Yes, I want to rent a nice, complete, solid thing.
Oh.
But thank you. I think climbing up and standing on it on uneven ground, too scary.
It'd be scary, yeah.
Yeah. Remember, I have vertigo. So I need a nice solid base.
Yeah, like the pickup truck, Nancy. That looks real solid.
It's kind of a big bed. Right in it.
I remember a story Jane Merrill was telling about painting her, uh, before she moved out, painting her house. She got in the front of the bucket of her great big tractor and that's how she painted the house.
Thought of that. I thought the people across the street have a nice bucket on their tractor. Maybe I could just move along. I know this is fascinating for our audience. Let's get to 7:30.
This is going to be the longest five minutes.
Yeah.
I'm going to be baking pies and making cider donuts at Shelburne twice a week.
Wow.
Come in and get them.
Yeah.
This could be pretty impressive. I think we may get to over a hundred people on this Zoom call.
I'm seeing that.
In fact.
For people who say it should only be in person, I think this benefits a lot of people.
Valerie, I know that there are different Zoom subscriptions. Do we have a limit?
I asked that question earlier today. Um, I think we can have at least a couple hundred.
Okay.
Okay.
I think, um, one of the things we typically do at the beginning of a public hearing is introduce, have the planning board members introduce themselves. I think we can certainly do that prior to starting the hearing. Um, so why don't we try to fill some time with that? Um, for those of you don't know me, I'm Lori Clark and the current chair of the planning board. Um, John?
Yeah, John Clonar-Mono, planning board member.
All right, Nancy?
Nancy Arsenal, planning board member.
Margaret?
Uh, Margaret Costello, planning board member.
Debbie?
Uh, Debbie Woods, voting associate, planning board member.
All right, Valerie?
I'm Valerie Ortiz, I'm the planning director.
And Michael?
Michael Fliegel, land use planner, GIS administrator.
All right, awesome.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Just a procedural thing. Um, if a letter is sent in beforehand, does that become part of the public hearing?
It does. As long as the correspondence is received either prior or to, or during, while a public hearing is open, um, it will be considered part of the intake, um, of that information.
Thank you.
And to answer your question, I think you're getting at is yes, your, um, letter was included in our packet for tonight.
Thank you.
And, and all those correspondence we receive are on the website that anybody else can see, right?
Yeah. Right, all of the documentation taken in, um, is part of public record, um, and is open, um, to the public.
Well, we've gone over a hundred.
Yeah, this will be our new record.
Might be a town record.
You might get a new member out of this.
Did you count them, John, or is there a way to, um, count?
No, if you list the participants in Zoom.
Oh, yeah, 106. Got it.
Yeah, no, I didn't count them.
You never know what an engineer is going to do with idle time.
Might have tried to calculate them, but not count them.
All right, it is 7:30. And with that, we are here and will open the public hearing for the petition for special permit and site plan approval of 501 Gleeson Dale Road. Um, the first order of business is, um, we need to, uh, waive the reading of the public hearing notice. Um, do I hear a motion to do that?
Sure, I moved that we waived the reading of the public hearing notice.
I need a second. I know Karen's not here.
Second.
All right, um, so we're going to take a planning board vote now to waive the reading of the public hearing notice. Um, and we'll do a roll call vote. So, uh, Nancy?
Hi.
Meg?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
And Debbie, I guess?
Yeah.
That's I'm just sure I.
And I, okay. All right, before we begin, I want to just go through procedurally what I expect to happen tonight. So first off, I know that the staff has mostly muted everyone, and I would ask everyone to remain on mute unless you are speaking. Called upon to speak. I do want to acknowledge that we have limited time tonight. So I wanted to state that upfront. And we're going to have about forty five minutes for this first discussion. And therefore, I wanted to go through what I expect to do with that time. I expect there to be a lot of conversation about about potential additional information needed. And therefore, with tonight's time, I wanted to, we will first hear from the applicant on what is proposed. They'll have a chance to share with us whatever information they would like to. I'm then going to take comment from, we have some folks potentially visiting us from the state government. And if we have state government guests, I after we have the applicant speak, I'd be interested in hearing. What are visitors from the state government have to say? We also have some visitors from our own local government and certainly will allow them a chance to speak. And then I will turn to the planning board for a specific focused discussion on. What, if any, additional information we feel is needed? So that, as well as a specific conversation about the requested waivers, to try to give applicant. Some feedback on that. And then from there, I would go to public comment. Now, again, we're allotting about forty five minutes, of which I've already taken three. And so I anticipate that we will not get through everyone tonight. And at the end of that forty five minutes, we will then. See if we want to continue and if the applicant, as for those of you who are here when I said it, if the applicant is open to us continuing. Or not, with a hundred and nineteen people on this call, I anticipate that we will not have a chance to hear from everybody who wants to speak. If we don't get through everything and everyone who wants to speak, I anticipate a motion to continue. If the applicant agrees, we would basically then designate another night to continue the conversation. Now, for those of you in public, if you are not able to make that additional time, should we set one? Again, you can also send comment directly to the planning office as well. That would be, again, become part of the record of the public hearing, assuming we continue. Let's see. I do encourage anyone that we don't get to tonight to to do that. I also want to state that I realize that the application touches upon some topics that may be sensitive for some people. And would ask everyone to be respectful and allow one person to speak at a time. When we do get to public input, please raise your hand and I'll call upon you. You'll be asked to state your name and address and give. Be given a couple minutes to make comment or ask questions. I would ask at that time that you please make your comments and questions and address to the board itself. And not one individual or the applicant. And just a reminder to all that for any comments or questions, the applicant. It's really within their rights to decide how and when they choose to respond to any of those. Let's see. Lastly, I just want to remind everyone that we are not here to debate. Whether we are pro or anti-gun, and any comments of these kinds will be considered out of scope of this hearing. Manufacturing isn't allowed use in this zone. And by state law, we cannot choose the types of businesses that are there within the manufacturing or retail, et cetera. But we can discuss the impacts and concerns regarding. The potential business such as noise, safety, traffic, et cetera. So again, when we get to public input, I'd ask that you keep your comments on topic around the impacts. Are there any questions before we begin?
Laurie, I'm getting some feedback from one person who is not, okay, they just muted themselves. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions before we begin? All right, with that, I would say if we could have the applicant introduce themselves. And again, you have the floor to share information about your application. Hold on, I think you're on mute.
One second. Oh, I'm unmute. Okay, sorry about that. My name's Chris Franklin. I'm the owner of the Gleeson Dale Mill. My application is to allow artists, we're looking for twelve artist spaces to be allowed in a. A spot that we have vacant, and we also looking for ten, I say ten gun dealers, but. People that will deal with fixing guns, whatever. It's a small space. I know the guns are sending everybody off, but. To like to go to the art space first, we have the spaces all of it, all pretty much rented. Due to the fact that the art space in Maynard was shut down. So I'm looking for the planning board to grant me a special permit to allow that to happen. Allow the space to be divided into a smaller, like artist loft spaces, I call it, but artist, small artist spaces. And then the other part is we, the gun. People, I'm hoping they, I'm looking to have them in a different part of the building, or there would be no interaction with many other tenants. To have them, to allow them to use, you know, repair guns, whatever. It's just not. The gun activities that they're looking to do, or you know, it also is dictated by my insurance company. So realistically, there's very limited public interaction, that kind of thing. The insurance company has stated what they're willing to allow me to do there. And pretty much it's, you know, they could buy, sell. Guns and no ammunition, no black powder being, you know, essentially you can buy an inert product and sell an inert product or repair an inert product. But they can't, you know, no gun, no no ammunition, that kind of thing. And those units are very much smaller. I I'm looking for her application tent. We only have three people committed to take spaces. So it's a, you know, very small number. It's, I just figured I'd had to cover my bases. The space is going to be set up for possibly ten. I've got three people interested in renting space at the mill. And we're we're kind of taking it from there. I should have said, I want three people to be allowed to be gun dealers. But I would figured I would have been back here and planning when I wanted to add three or four, you know, another one or two or three. And the units are very small. The average unit for the gun. People is eight by eight space, very, very small. So they're not doing a lot of, you know, they're not doing much. In the way of, then it's, these spaces are not grandiose in any way. They're about the size of your average closet. So that's what I'm looking for. And I'm also looking for waivers since everything for the building. The spaces are being done inside an existing building that's, you know, been there since eighteen forty, whatever. I'm not looking for anything, you know, unusual. And I'm not expecting a lot of volume, having been for the artists, having been to their space in Maynard. At most, I ever saw is two or three cars at any one time. So the twelve artist spaces, we're looking to have. I don't anticipate having more than, you know, increased traffic or maybe one or two cars. A day or maybe three or four a day, not not a, something that's gonna require a lot of parking. Let's see, what else was there? You know, essentially, everything's inside, so. Yeah, that explains what I'm looking to do. We can go from there if you have any questions.
Given how little information you just gave, I'm gonna actually cut, cut, try to cut to the chase of some information. That would have been typical for us to receive. To try to put that out there. So I think we're gonna be interested in, you know, the current occupant, occupancy capacity. Traffic, parking, hours of operation, and then how much do we expect that to be different with the new space? And so in in our applications, we typically want to know really things that will drive volume. Both in people in the building as well as traffic around the building coming and going. For example, if you're having artists there, are there going to be events like there used to be at art space that would drive quite a bit of traffic, et cetera? So I do think that. You're, there's going to be a need for to paint some picture to try to get some forecast of volume and usage. Both from a, what is the current and what do we, how much, therefore, how much is it growing? So I do want to put that out there. And then I believe. I would anticipate a lot of questions around, you know, when you say fixing slash repair guns or whatever. I believe there's gonna be a lot more question about what does to do business as a gun manufacturer mean? You gave one detail, which is buy and sell no ammunitions. But how much is fix, repair versus how much is retail? And again, that also drives back to the volume and traffic of the coming and going. So. I'm just putting that out there because it's going to be very difficult to try to put forth a decision with no information around the volume, capacity. And usage, not only on the normal side, but also in the events side or in things of that nature. From the artist's perspective. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Well, I would say realistically, Monday, a day to day, Monday through Friday. We're not to anticipate seeing a lot of, on the artist's side, not a lot of increased volume and the traffic. And normally, the mill property sits vacant. Not a Saturday, Sunday, there's not a lot of, and talking with the artists, on average, they usually do, I think, once a quarter kind of events. Normally on weekends. And so that would not really impact the traffic. The people coming, going of the mill property on a day to day basis. You know, so we have our normal volume of woodworkers and traffic, truck traffic, et cetera. But the artist's space, you know, their events are normally, again, quarterly from what I've been told. And even if it was twenty, thirty, forty cars, we can handle that. When there is no one, you know, essentially on a weekend, a Saturday, Sunday timeframe versus. It would be difficult to handle thirty or forty additional cars on a day to day basis, because there's just not that much. The parking is somewhat taken during the day by, with existing clientele.
So two specific questions. For the gun manufacturing, will there be a retail side of that besides the repair, fix manufacturing?
Not that I'm aware of, but again, I, the, 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 I have three people that have been designated that they want to come in. And I'm, again, from my insurance perspective, I think it's only can be no retail, just fix, repair. You know, one on one service, not a. Open to the public kind of coming and going.
And from an art space standpoint, do you expect that they would hold public events like the old art space does?
Yes. I I would expect that they they've kind of designated that they did, I'm gonna say quarterly events and maybe occasional, like a Friday afternoon. Opening, but those were not public, public, the the weekday events were normally not, I'm gonna say they're flash sales, lack of a better term.
One thing I forgot to say procedurally is any comment, including my own, expressed by one single planning board member, does not necessarily represent. The opinion of the board as a whole. My questions to you are really trying to get at the normal information that we would typically receive in an application. And I think all the things that I mentioned and that we're talking about. My guess is we're going to want some formal forecast or something in writing about what you expect to happen or not happen. Because just, just hearing you say it won't be much and it won't impact parking. We cannot necessarily be expected to make a decision based on that statement. And so I I just want to set your expectations that when we start opening up to the planning board questions. I anticipate we'll have a list of information that we would expect. Before we would feel comfortable and confident to render a decision.
Yeah, that's fine. More than happy to just, you know, again, I needed to figure out what. I didn't expect to get an answer today.
The the other types of information that we typically would be interested in would have to do with. Any types of activity that would create noise. What your signage is expected to be and lighting is expected to be, if there's any change in that based on these being added. To the space. And I know some folks also have some questions around security and any waste materials. Being produced and stored on site as well.
That's fine. Again, I don't anticipate any increase in noise. And I don't anticipate any increase in real, you know, ambient lighting. And again, these, all these activities, the, the. Gun people don't have, and essentially, they have only minus small amount of windows. And the art space has windows so they can see their art. I don't anticipate it'll be ambient lighting inside the units. So there is, again, these are, these activities they're doing are inside the building. So, you know, be just like office building light. So there are lights there now.
All right, so given, I know I've spoken a lot, given the limited amount of information we've been given. I am first going to go to the planning board to offer any clarifying questions you want to raise. Before we go on to our state guests. Nancy? You're on mute.
I'm wondering if Chris is aware that late this afternoon, an announcement was made that. Maynard Art Space has acquired a new building in the center of Maynard, and they are accepting lease requests on September first. Next door to that church that's right in the center there that holds music concerts and whatever. I just didn't know, if you do know about that, what is your feeling of how that might affect your art space?
I, you know, something, I'm not worried about it at all. I mean, and we've had commitments for people. If they decide to go to other spaces, that's fine. We'll find other, we'll find other people that want either a small workshop space. Or we'll modify the space to fit whatever the current needs are gonna be. Maybe we'll do more gun dealers. I'm sorry. At least we're smiling on that one.
Not really. All right, I have one other question. So you indicated sort of there would not be sales done of the guns and materials. And I know that in Littleton, the sales were actually on the internet. And that's how they put out word about the the pieces and people came to pick them up. Or it it was advertised and those were kept as like a storage place with all the parts and everything.
Yeah, that's essentially what we're looking to do.
Oh, okay. So they're gonna stockpile all their parts and assemble guns to then sell on the internet. And would they be shipping out and all being stored there with all their pieces, right?
That's the anticipation, yes.
Would you anticipate customer pickup? Because again, that would drive traffic.
I would say. Unlikely. Yeah, again, somebody's local, they might pick up, but realistically, no, I don't anticipate. You know, a hundred, I I don't anticipate a lot of traffic, just, you know, the normal UPS, FedEx, that kind of activity.
Debbie?
One question I have is if you are moving state to state across the country, because every state is so different. You really are not able to carry your guns with you. You do have to have them shipped. And typically, what it's done is it's shipped from one dealer, for example, in California to a dealer in Massachusetts. You do have to have them shipped. And typically what it's done is it's shipped from one dealer, for example, in California to a dealer in Massachusetts. I, that owner would then go and pick it up. Do you expect that to be happening? Because that, so do you expect that to be happening?
Um, again, I haven't asked the gun guys exactly how they're, and I would probably say, yeah, they'll pick it up. If it was a local residence, probably. But I've talked to some others that just do strictly internet sales. They all they do is. They come in and they and they send ship it out to other, you know, to the end user. I um, that is another way that it um, it happens. And again, I've talked to a couple of them. Um, that essentially looking, this is a glorified where, lack of better term, it's a warehouse.
So I I do think we will need clarity and more detail on exactly what. The manufacturing business entails and how that relates to employees, how many employees and the and. Um, traffic and coming and going. Um, so that's just something I want to put out there. Um, John, did you have a question?
Well, I guess I'll just say that, uh, you know, I guess irregardless of the actual business, there were a few. Issues that we, that uh, there was some information about that probably should be cleared up. And one was there was this question about whether or not the entity that owns the mill actually exists anymore.
The LLC.
Yeah, the LLC, I I don't know about that. And then also was a question about uh, some back taxes. The administrator had said that there was some issue there, so. I don't know if you.
Uh, the taxes were paid today so that you could discuss it tonight. The LLC, I just have, um. I have to have my accountant take care of it for me. So, you know, it's just, it just, it probably went, yeah. I think I owe last year's taxes on that also.
Lori.
I, go ahead Nancy.
Um, also, I am wondering, um, I know the fire chief said there was a lot that had to be done for egress and entrance. And also upgrading fire systems if we're gonna have all those people in there, where does that stand?
I'm waiting for the fire chief to uh update me on what he wanted done. And we, there are things that need to get done. We need exit lighting and some pool stations. Um, and the sprinkler system has been maintained and the alarm system's up and running. But uh those, there are, I mean, like the artist's spaces need to, um, it doesn't have exit lighting. Um, so that needs to get attended to and needs pull stations, which that floor does not have, has never had. Uh, so yeah, there are some things that need to get done. I don't know what he's talking, what kind of. Um, the um, fire chief and the building inspector, I walked them through the building. Uh, two or three weeks ago, and they were gonna give me an update as of what they wanted done. On things to be done. And I'm kind of waiting for that to come uh from them. Uh, and I saw Mr. Ramsbottom this afternoon, and he was, he was uh sent over a, an email of things he wanted. Uh, me to uh, uh, to, to cover, get done for them. So, yeah, there are some things to get done. I, it's not, I don't think it's an insurable list. They seem pretty pleased with the whole uh. Um, interior of the property. So um, outside of a few housekeeping things that needed to get done, I, I think we're pretty, pretty solid there.
Debbie?
Um, in talking about um requirements for the for the fire department, when I was looking at the plans. I'm, granted, I'm not an expert at at plan looking at, but on the, especially on the floor for the artist. Is there only one way in and out, one egress, or are, is there one on either side of the um, either side of the floor?
Uh, yeah, there's two forms of egress.
So one on each side of the floor?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Max?
Yeah, I I understand as an owner that you need to fill the building and just be profitable. I totally understand that. But this is just a really curiosity question. As, as a human being. What is prompting you to open this space to gun manufacturers as opposed to artists and craftspeople? I just, um, I'm just curious. I would like to hear an honest answer.
Um, they're small business people like everybody else, and I just feel like they should get a chance. And I mean, there is the Second Amendment. I know, I don't, I don't own any guns. I don't have a license to carry guns. I know, but when I was a kid, we hunted, I grew up in farm country. We hunted, most of my neighbors had guns. Uh, they were farmers. I mean, they were shooting foxes that were trying to eat their chickens or whatever. I mean, I doesn't say I was uh either a good hunter or whatever, but I mean. It's not, it only recently has there been, you know, so many gun experiences, but uh. Yeah, we had them, we treated them with care. And again, it was never an issue growing up for me. And again, we we hunted, we did things that kids did in the, you know, sixties and seventies. Well, some of these didn't stop. So realistically, I don't, you know, I don't see the, you know, I'm not crazy about these mass shootings. That you see almost every week. But, you know, we're talking about people with handguns and hopefully. You know, a gun never hurt anybody. It's the guy, or the person behind the, behind it.
All right, I'm gonna move us along to keep us on topic. Um. I think that Nancy, do you have a question?
It's a quick one. Have you gotten an indication from the potential gun tenants? What security might be needed around all their components? Um, why would someone not want to break in there and and get the pieces they need? Like what security is needed?
Uh, they said they're gonna provide their own security. I think it's gonna be pretty much, they're gonna have their own security. Again, they. Their spaces have to be approved by the ATF. So the federal government has to come in and approve these spaces before anything happens. So they're gonna dictate what they want to see in the way of security, lighting, whatever. Um, but again, that that's, you know, it's not up to me.
Thank you.
All right, so just as a time check, we have eighteen minutes left. Um, I do want to put something out there for the planning board to comment, because I know I made a lot of statements at the beginning. Just what our typical information required is. I do feel like we need more documented information around volume of occupants' capacity. Current and new traffic, parking, the parking plan for where people will park, the hours of operation. Um, more information about uh what an actual uh gun manufacturer will be doing. What what events uh plan uh there will be and the parking around that, the the parking flow around that. Um, et cetera. I'm putting that out there. I guess I'd like the planning board members to comment whether they agree or not agree.
Agree.
Okay.
The other, the the other thing Lori, I'd like to see is um, Chris mentioned multiple times, his insurance is requiring certain things. If it is public information, I would like him to share that with us so that we understand not only our rules. But what are the rules that he has to follow for his insurance?
Okay.
Also, um, I'm just wondering who, like he mentioned, the ATF might require what the booths are like. Who follows up in that and makes sure there's no discrepancy or things don't just fall through the cracks? Like who's responsible for making sure those ATF guidelines remain in place? So I don't.
They have annual inspections from the ATF. So that if you, if you're a licensed gun dealer in Massachusetts, there's supposedly every year the ATF. Can come in and do a surprise inspection and tell you and and see what you're doing. And again, I, from what I gathered, it was talking with the gun people. Again, I don't know anything. I've never rented to gun people before, so I'm. This is kind of new to me. Um, the local police department all have, also has a a say as to what go goes on.
All right, um, if we do have guests from our state government, Valerie, I'm not sure if you know whether or not. I know um potentially they're coming. Um, I certainly would first want to open it up to them. Given that they took the time to um attend tonight.
Yes, it looks like we may have someone from Rep Hogan's office. I'm not sure if they do wish to speak or if it's more just to to listen.
So again, I'll open it up if you would like to speak, now is the time, um, but you, no obligation.
Hi Lori, hi Valerie. Lucas here from SPT Hogan's office. I'm not gonna speak, just uh, we're just here for information. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Um, I also know, I know that we had our chief of police here. Um, I don't know if you would like to say something? Hello?
Very good evening. Um, so as as Chris was uh stating earlier that. Um, you know, there, there is an inspection that would be done by my office, actually, on, there would be some licensing that has to be completed by my office. We haven't got any uh applications whatsoever here. Um, and I'm. You know, I am, I have concerns obviously for the fact that the building is uh has safety concerns through the fire. And uh, the fire chief and the building commissioner. So those have to be met before anything uh happens. So, um, I I'm not inclined to, uh, I'm not denying anyone's license. Uh, that is legally able to get it, but I'm not inclined to um actually. Uh, approve a license for the building that's not uh uh ready for any sort of um. A- a- any sort of increase. And and Chris, the uh, the parking down there, I know is is very difficult right now, especially on your. For uh, people parked along the sides of the fire lanes and um, there's, there's quite a lot of concerns. Like uh, the planning board said with traffic and things that need to be followed up on before any sort of business go uh, change happens at that location.
And Chris, I'm not sure if you did already see the fire chief's um input on. Um, he would not want any parking or dumpster um or storage in between the buildings. So in case that wasn't shared, I did want to state that out loud um as well.
Yeah, he, the um, fire chief mentioned the dumpsters. He didn't mention the vehicle. Uh, he mentioned vehicle parking possibly on one side, but not both. But one of the gun dealers is online here, his name's Alex. And he said, you're asking questions that I can't answer, that he might be able to answer if you would be uh, more like to let him speak. Then that'll be fine.
Sure.
Well, I I I'm gonna say for for my purposes, I'm all set with um. Based on like, cause I know what the licensing is going to serve. And I have concerns too, Chris, about. Um, you're just because your insurance doesn't allow it, doesn't mean it's not gonna happen. So it's gonna be the fact that like what's within their license purview. There's three types of licensing for dealers. Uh, there's gunsmith, and there's licenses to sell, rent, lease firearms, shotguns, machine guns, that's one type. The other one is to perform gunsmithing services. The one is to sell ammunition. So um, you know. If you're limiting not to sell ammunition, that would be something though you'd have to tell those dealers not to. To put in for. However, on my end, uh, I don't adhere to your insurance company. So then I couldn't prevent that from from them applying for that.
Okay.
So there are those things that we we'd have, you'd have to work on.
Have to work that out.
Yeah, again, I I can't enforce your insurance uh binders. Um, so who came to me and applied for all three? Um, and that site was opened up for it, then they would get off and they were proved through a state background, they would get all three.
Okay.
So, and everything does have to, I know Nancy, you asked about being locked up in security. That's one of the criteria that we do look at when we do the inspections. So that's, we, and there are many state laws about that. And um, debt about going back and forth over state, you know, that's transferring things in from out of state. That does happen, the internet sales do happen. So these are all things um. You know, that this, these licenses would give through the federal, you know, the FFLs. So, I mean, you're, your individual can more than happy to speak. I'm, I'm not preventing that at all.
No, thank you.
All right, so if you did want to um have someone speak on your behalf regarding um what happens at a gun business. That uh, we can give a few moments to that. I do want to leave a few minutes to, for the planning board to um. Quickly talk about waivers. And I can acknowledge right now that um, we likely are not going to get to any public input tonight. But frankly, I don't necessarily feel that we have enough information to even. Comment on as of yet. Um, so, but again, uh, people can feel free to um send. Any comment, initial comment in, um, and we'll be talking about whether we plan to continue this or not momentarily. Um, so did you want your potential gun dealer to share with us um, parts of?
I'm, I'm sure he can give you more insight, because he does it for, you know, he does it for a living. I'm sure he can give you a lot more insight than I can, because I don't do it for a living. And his name is Alex, so I don't know what user he is on the system tonight.
So. Try and see if my mic's working right now. I'm actually on right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, perfect. Hey guys, uh, yeah, my name is Andrew. Uh, sorry, Chris, I meant to correct you all about the name, but yeah, name's Andrew, uh, with Aries Armory. Um, yeah, so I can give some clarification in terms of some of the questions that Lori had um asked about. Um, Lori, in terms of just like how, I guess how much traffic would be going to the business. What I'm thinking is as I operate right now, it's, it's um, you know, kind of like a side hustle for me. It's um, a weekend job, if you will. So normally how I set my business setup right now currently. Is that's by appointment only over the weekend. So that's, you know, Saturday, Sunday. And that's honestly what it says as well on my federal firearms license. So it's pretty in sync. We don't expect it to be like, you know, a lot of traffic coming in, especially throughout the weekday. Um, for that regard, hopefully that, you know, clarifies the um, uh, clarifies the answer a little bit more. Um, yeah, and also in terms of storage and how that works, we already have a plan to have, you know, actual legitimate safes to store. Any firearms or firearms parts. That'll be by, you know, from individual dealer to dealer. And all of us are pretty savvy on security systems, um, even at my home where I keep my firearms, aside from the safes. I make sure that there are camera systems around to make sure that there's the utmost of security that without a doubt applies to my business even more so. So while we plan on setting up security systems, um, I've looked into simply safe, some other uh, security systems like Arlo. Definitely getting cameras in there to make sure that everything is secure and that, you know, we're above board. Um, and so what Chris had spoken to about the um, the the inspections to make sure nothing slips through the cracks. That we are adhering to both state and federal uh regulation. Yes, so the ATF can actually come inspect our business whenever. My, in fact, I had my ATF inspection uh early on this year, which I, you know, passed, of course. Uh, hopefully that speaks to, you know, my credibility. But, you know, the state also can come in every year to do their inspection as well. And so there are several layers of, you know, checks to make sure that we're keeping everything above board for what we're doing. And making sure that we're, um, you know, paying attention to both uh state and federal law. Um, now in terms of the employee traffic, you had mentioned, you know, all that stuff. I know a lot of the people who want to try and, you know, apply to be a tenant with Chris. They are, you know, sole proprietors as a business. I'm an LLC, but the thing is I'm still a single person LLC. So I don't foresee that there's gonna be a lot of cars, you know, that are gonna be jamming up the parking lot, or that there's gonna be a lot of, you know, just like, you know, people congregated. Um, in the area. Um, so that's what I could think off the top of my head, just trying to clarify some of the, the questions that you guys had. Um, you know, I'm open to if you guys have any further follow up.
Um, I guess. It's eight oh eight. I'm gonna um, thank you, by the way, Andrew, for sharing your perspective. I appreciate that. Um. I do want to move to a real quick discussion about the waivers inquired about, because I think it is um. Imperative that we give um some initial reaction um to that. Um, the first one of which is to ask for a waiver of the site plan review um for the special permit. And I'd like to get some planning board member comments regarding that.
Well, I think because of the parking uh issues that we've talked about a little bit. I think we need to do some level of site plan review.
I agree. And I think just because they're starting off small and that they may be a single dealer or a single whatever. Once we grant the, once we approve things and once we grant the application, there's no then reeling it in. So I'm not in favor of of definitely that waiver. I would want to see a site plan.
Okay, it sounds like everyone is in agreement on that. Um, the next one was about storm water management.
Well, I mean, I didn't get a chance to bring it up, but I have a little bit of concern about potential hazardous materials. I mean, even the art spaces, certainly, a lot of those materials that can be used in in various art activities. Uh, you know, you can't get rid of easily, right? And so there's some concerns there as well as, I mean, I don't know about the. You know, the gun operations, but certainly there could be uh, you know, materials that could have some hazardous. Uh, component to them, so.
I I definitely understand what you're saying, John, and agree with that. I think from a, from a building envelope standpoint. Um, so I I think this isn't really about your typical storm water management, because we're not building any new buildings. But I agree with you, John, that we do need to understand um, any mat- hazardous materials.
We need to make sure. Don't get into the groundwater.
Um, the other waiver was the traffic study, and I would say until we have more information. Of what is expected, it's really difficult to say whether or not. Uh, we, the traffic study is appropriate, and so I don't feel that we have enough information to say one way or the other on that. Um, so it suggests that we get some better um documentation about what is anticipated and forecasted. Um, et cetera, um, and then the last one, I know there's two, uh, is um.
Landscaping.
Landscaping. Any comment from the board on that?
Yeah, I don't know, it's not clear that any of this affects any landscaping thing, so.
Right, they, they aren't necessarily doing any work outside, however, I, I, I am curious. As I, I have been told that there is now some outdoor storage happening along the river, which I know can be, be quite sensitive. Um, which to me is a, a bit of an expanded use, even though it has nothing to do with the artists or guns moving in. Um, and so, I'm not necessarily inclined to see a landscaping plan, but I am inclined to understand. Uh, what is happening on the site from an outdoor storage space, because that was not necessarily something I think that. Was anticipated in the past.
Um, would that be part of a site plan, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and last is uh, building elevation. Plan, and again, I think we're not changing any buildings, so I think that one.
Yeah.
Seem like it's not necessarily relevant to this application.
Yeah.
Um, so again, those aren't necessarily decisions, but I, I did wanna get you some directional feedback on. Uh, where the waivers would go, um, and so we've done that, um. I guess my question to you, it being eight thirteen, and we said we would stop at eight fifteen, is, are you, are you, are you open to continuing this hearing? I believe you said yes, um, even though you're on mute, um, and so, um, Valerie, when would? Um. The next date be, and part of this is also, um. I can certainly work with our staff to uh have notes from tonight of the different types of information we would like. Uh, but I, so I wanna make sure we choose a date where you will be able to um bring some of that information forth as well. Um, so Valerie, when would the first available date be?
Yeah, I think um, Chris, depending on how, how far you may already be with looking at a site plan, um, you know, probably will take. Some time for an engineer to be able to get that material to us, um, I'm sorry, you're on, you're on mute, so I can't.
Mute on my thing, alright, uh, yeah, I, I know it'll take two to three months minimum to get somebody out there to look at the uh site.
Okay, and again, I don't think that, I don't think we're looking at the site plan as um truly. Like as if we're developing, I think what you're hearing us talk about are things like. Outdoor storage or traffic patterns and where the parking will be. Um, and then once we start talking about um parking, then we will also wanna know about snow storage and. So those types of things, so not.
So you, you, you pretty much want parking and snow, traffic, parking, snow storage.
And again, I can certainly work with staff to uh sort of get you a hit list. Of uh the typical things of the, of the types of things related to what we discussed tonight.
Sure, and I will talk to Andrew, I'm sorry, I got his name wrong. And ask him to get a better understanding of what their operation is gonna be, so we can convey that to you in a. A uh written format, so you can read about it and then, you know, come up with uh questions accordingly.
So we have, um, you know, if you're thinking two to three months out from today, uh, we did just set a few October dates. Um, maybe we push it to October third.
That would be, sure. At least, and then I can at least get started and get some, maybe something preliminary to you, to then have you look at.
Okay, and, and feel free, um. To uh have that exchange and back and forth, so that um, you know that what you're putting forth um. Is what would be expected as well, so don't, don't feel like, you know, we don't talk, um, you shouldn't talk to our staff between now and then.
To try to get this moving, so, um, yeah, so I, I've been a hindrance to her, so don't worry.
Okay, so, again, I know there are hands up, uh, actually, chief, did you wanna have?
Uh, just real quick, uh, I, I would encourage Andrew to reach out to me, as well as his um, other uh, um. Business individuals, and to have a conversation before anything, uh, you know, before that October third meeting, so I, I welcome. I welcome to call me or stop in to have an open conversation.
Yeah, chief, please, I'll, I'll take under information and um, I'll reach out to you.
So, real quick, Debbie?
Um, one of the things I guess I would like to ask is, in looking through the application, it's a little thin, and I think there are. Um, absolutely different areas of the application that do need to be, do need to be filled in a little differently than they currently are, and I would ask that the application be completed. Fully.
Meg?
Uh, I have a question about the remediation for the brownfield stuff. Um, why I'd like to know, you don't have to answer me now, but I would like some kind of clarification on what's being done for the remediation. Um, and I also would like clarification on. Um, I know that somebody said that the ATF comes in once a year. Um, and that the chief, uh, Sully said that he would do an inspection as well, but I would like to have some kind of. Concrete verification on paper, um, because the ATF monitoring, um, I questioned. Um, that reality of that, because I'm not sure how Littleton got so out of hand. So I would like really solid clarification on who was gonna do, be doing the um inspections and um. Periodically as well as protecting uh the town of Stowe in our interest. So I assume that that would be Chief Sully.
Alright, um, with that, it is eight eighteen and we're over, um, I really apologize to the public, I know there are a few hands up. But I don't feel that I can start calling on people, given that we are overtime. Again, I encourage everyone to get uh comments and writing if you don't feel you'll be here on October third. Um, to the planning board, so we have them um on hand, and uh frankly, I think. Uh, we probably need more information uh for you to react to as well. Um, so I appreciate, I appreciate the over a hundred people that came out tonight, um, and have interest. Um, and again, I expect to see a lot of information and feedback coming into the planning board, and please know for all the public. Uh, the planning board is really not allowed to speak of this topic outside of the public hearing, and so you will not hear us speak of it. Until that October third meeting, except to maybe discuss with Valerie what information we want to ask for. Um, so just know that when you send your feedback in, we are not able to reply back and comment. Uh, our comments can only be made during the public hearing, um, so again, I appreciate everyone for coming and hopefully. Um, we'll either hear from you or see you again in October.
Um, excuse me, Lori, can I ask, and sorry for jumping in, in October, will we get a chance then to provide feedback?
Oh, yes, the whole point of the public hearing is everyone who wants to speak will get a chance to do so.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Can we um just have a vote on that continuance date?
Oh, yes, sorry, so now I need a motion on the continuance.
I move that we continue the hearing till October third at seven thirty.
Can I have a second?
Maybe you can find a second?
Anyone?
A second.
Thank you, alright, and we'll take a roll call vote on the continuance, um, Nancy?
I.
Meg?
I.
Debbie?
I.
John?
Hi.
I, so we are officially continued, thank you everyone for attending.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, thank you Jonathan Bransfield for uh being patient with us. Uh, you are, were unfortunate enough to be scheduled uh the same night as that hearing. Um, so again, we are, um, we have, for those of you who are staying with us. Um, one second, I need to get on the sec, the right page. Um, we do have a second public hearing, so we're gonna open that now. Um, for modification of a contractor's yard special permit, erosion controls, uh, special permit and earth removal special permit. And site plan approval for sixty-three to sixty-five White Pond Road, um. Again, um, we're opening the hearing and the first order of business, I guess would be to waive the reading of the notice.
I move that we waive the reading of the notice of the public hearing.
Alright, and we will take a roll call vote on that, uh, so let's see, John?
I.
Nancy?
I.
Meg?
I.
And Debbie?
I.
And I, alright, so we waive the hearing.
Lori, may I please ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
Am I, am I needed on this as I was the previous?
I believe so.
Yes, you are.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Alright, um, okay, uh, just procedurally again, um. We will have the applicant um have some time to share with us their plans uh for modification. Um, and then we'll take a more traditional route where we can take questions from the planning board and then open it up to the public. Uh, for questions and comments, remember, uh, comments from the individual planning board members do not necessarily represent the. Uh, opinion of the board as a whole, um, when we get to the public comment, uh, if you raise your hand, either virtually or physically or call out. I will call upon you, if you could um state your name and address, and you'll have a few minutes to speak, please address your comments to the board. Um, and just remember that it is really up to the applicant if they want to respond or not respond to any comment or question. Um. I think that's it, I'm gonna turn it over to Jonathan, or your designee.
Yeah, I think, um, I think I saw Chris Anderson chime in, um, Chris, are you there?
Yes, sir, uh, Chris Anderson with Canigan Engineering, I'm uh the civil site engineer for Jonathan First Project. Um, if it's okay with the board, am I able to share my screen to pull up the site plan?
Yeah, hold on.
You should be able to, um, are, are you seeing the, the share screen button?
Yes, it says host disabled, participant screen share right now. Yeah, it's still not letting me do it.
Um, I can make you a co-host and see if that will help.
Sorry, it could be difficult. Alright, great, here we go. So can everybody see my screen now?
Yes, yes.
Great, alright, so again, for the record, Chris Anderson with Canigan Engineering. Here before you tonight for a modification of the existing special permit for a contractor's yard, uh, and earth removal permit, among other things. Uh, this project was for the board back in September of twenty sixteen, um, at which time it was the intent to construct a four thousand square foot. Um, um, industrial building with a surrounding contractor's yard on the property. Um, just to orientate ourselves here, we have White Pond Road that runs along the side of the page here with the. Remaining portion of the property extending in a westerly direction towards Assabett Brook. Um, historically before uh Jonathan uh gained access to the property, it contained a single family home with a belief, anecdotally a. Uh, some kind of a horse facility, um, but at that point in time, that has been completely removed from the property. Uh, it's being actively used as a contractor's yard by the applicant. Um, it's the intent to modify the configuration of the actual paved parking lot configuration as well as the building. Um, as part of the original approval, the building was kind of skewed a little bit, um, compared to White Pond Road. Uh, so what we have done is modified the layout while maintaining the general intent of the original approval. Uh, to make it more parallel uh with White Pond Road to make the site work a little bit better. Um, since that time, um, much of the land has been taken out of the sixty, chapter sixty-one A, um, so it is now fully, um. You know, accessible to the uh applicant for use as a contractor's yard now, uh, historically it was not, so it was limited to. Only about an acre and a half of usable space. Um, so what the intent is, is to expand upon the original contractor's yard use within the site. Uh, currently, the site is been cleared, um, which was both done in conjunction with what was believed to be the original special permit. Um, but what we're here for you tonight is to amend that contractor's yard to encompass the property as it stands today. Uh, so it's the intent that the major, the remaining portions of the contractor's yard be underlaid with a regrind payment for the storage of materials. Um, for the proponents' business, um. As part of that, we are revamping the entire stormwater system to accommodate this use, uh, so what we did for the stormwater review was to. Imagine the site before it was occupied by uh the Branchfield Tree Company. Um, so it looked at a pre-existing woodland state with a small single family home, uh, what we've done is taken a look at that relative to the overall development. As it stands today, um, so what we're intending on doing is constructing a large infiltration basin along the southerly portion of the site. Uh, this will capture runoff from the paved areas around the immediate building, as well as the remaining portions of the. Contractor's yard, uh, such that every aspect of the stor- uh, contractor's yard is being captured and directed into this infiltration basin. Uh, for stormwater management purposes, as well as the various conservation aspects of the property as well. Um, as part of the overall submittal process, what we've also done is we have addressed, um. The original conditions of approval, um, if I provide documentation of that. Uh, some of those aspects include the inclusion of a sidewalk along White Pond Road. Additional landscaping along the immediate front of the property, among other things, and various other confirmation of site aspects as well. Um, we have sent this up to peer review, um, based on my conversations with uh Valerie earlier today, and. The peer review is hoping to get it taken care of, um, within the next week or so, so ideally. Uh, we should have that shortly, at which point we can address any further comment from that, um, but. Intention of tonight's meeting was to get this in front of uh the board members, get your initial feedback from the project, and answer any immediate questions. Um, ahead of getting that peer review, uh, with that being said, um, if there's any questions, I'll be more than happy to address them, or. Jonathan can answer them as well.
Alright, thank you, Chris, um, with that, I am gonna open up to the planning board members to see if they have any questions. John?
Yeah, maybe I'm just confused about some of this, but it seems like that there was a, a special permit back in twenty sixteen. And then between them and now, then and now, you, you did some things there, not exactly what the special permit detailed. Uh, and now you wanna make some more changes, is that true, or am I missing something?
Uh, the intent is to modify the plan or the special permit to accommodate the site changes that were performed. Uh, but not to encro- or increase the uh use on the property further than it's been done thus far.
But is it true that the. What was permitted and conditioned had to do with the one point five acres? And essentially now you have already done and expanded that out before the, this application?
Yes, right.
Do you have any comment on that, given that it wasn't in the original special permit?
Y- yeah, um, I've never owned property besides my house before, and, um. I've never, I've never really run or kind of managed a, a, you know, a site like that, so, um, you know. I- it's more ignorance than malice, I just, I just did stuff, I just cleared it, I just used it. You know, I, I stayed back from the wetland buffers, I, you know, I respected the buffers and, and, um. And, you know, up, up, and, you know, we're doing the stormwater project, but I never, you know, the, the, the whole site was kind of graded like a bowl, so the water never ran out anyway. Um, you know, I just used it, is all I can say, I use the.
So respectfully, you know ignorance is not an excuse.
Absolutely, no.
Okay.
Just let, I'm just letting. Just let, I'm just letting you know.
Understood, appreciate you being upfront.
Yeah, where I'm coming from, I, it's, 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 it's the situation of the situation.
Okay.
Right, so I guess from all of that, I'm trying to figure out, so where do we start from, right? Do we start from the other, the existing permit? And try to kind of see where from there, uh, do we start with the current existing conditions? Uh, and.
Well, we would have to understand what we would be permitting beyond the original decision, right? So to some degree, we do need to understand what was originally conditioned versus what the current state versus what the additional work is.
Right.
Um. And Chris, I don't know if you have a walkthrough of that you want to share with us, um.
Apologize to me, just so that the commission or the board, sorry, is aware of what originally was approved. Um, I can, I can do a brief walkthrough and I can provide a better.
And just know that some of our membership has changed since then, which is why I'm asking you to walk through it.
Hmm.
Yeah, no worries. No, I, I understand that. Um, so before you right now on the screen is the original approved plan. Um, as you can see, uh, contained a four thousand square foot structure. Uh, twenty-four parking spaces wrapped around the building with an area of pavement. Um, associated with it, um, and pretty much the remaining portions of the land being associated with the sixty-one A. Uh, which I said earlier, has been, um, resolved, so now the property is completely out of chapter. So this is what the original design looked like. As you can see, here's White Pond Road is for reference. Um, below, um, but this would be the revision, the revised plan. What we've done is, all we've done relative to the building and the parking configuration is rotated ninety degrees. Or make it more par- or parallel with White Pond Road. Um, and it reconfigured the parking layout as well, just to accommodate that. Um, that would be the modification to the immediate, um, area around the building. Uh, the stormwater design has been modified from the original infiltration basin that was located behind the building. Uh, to the, uh, southerly portion of the site, which is more conducive for the actual, uh, general sloping nature of the land. Uh, so they can capture everything and make it work appropriately. Um, but the primary amendment to the actual original special permit would be for the inclusion of the remaining portions of the land to be utilized as the, uh, contractor's yard for, uh, the landowner itself. Um, and in addition to that, a lot of the site plan changes that were made were also in a direct response to the original special permit conditions. Which we outlined in our narrative as part of that entire submittal, uh, which is quite lengthy, but it's, uh, we provide that documentation.
All right, thank you. Uh, Nancy.
Um, maybe I, I'm just trying to clarify what I am processing. Um, so I think it said your plan would bring up to date what is already going on in there. So I'm wondering, is there any increase to the number of vehicles and contractors who would be using this contractor yard? Um, more than is there right now?
No, no, I, I'm, we're, we're, we pay strict attention to the vehicle, um. Uh, limits that come in and out of the property and we're, we're, we're well under it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, I've been, I've been very thoughtful and selective in uh, minimizing traffic on White Pond Road, given the nature of White Pond Road.
Yep.
And given the desire to not have any, you know, negative interactions with my neighbors. Um, so, no, no more, no more increase, uh, than, than how it's, than how it runs now.
Okay, thank you.
Other playing board member questions or comments?
Well, I mean, just to be clear, that this, this building is not there yet, right?
No.
Proposed building.
Yeah.
I know in previous discussions, um, there was some, some concern on, um. Visuals, uh, from the front, uh, from a butters, um, so, uh. And then that's just one comment that I want us to consider. Um, the second thing is with, with all of the additional clearing, um, I will say that, um. Just as an observation, as someone who goes there all the time, um, there is also impact um, from the town forest in terms of, um, what you hear. Um, or see potentially is my impression, um. So that's just one thing there. I, I do, am curious to see if the board is interested in doing a sidewalk because I do think we need to understand the site versus just see this picture on a piece of paper.
Yes, good idea.
Yeah, that's almost a good idea. Yeah.
For sure. Cause we've only seen plans and haven't really seen what it grew into, you know?
Exactly.
I think there's a lot to look at there.
All right. Meg?
Yeah, I, I'm really concerned at the soft pedaling of how much um, clearing and additional activity has, has gone on, on this site over the, from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty-three. I, I, I'm just a little bit shocked that so much was done without any kind of permission granted. Or any kind of consultation, so I don't, I definitely want a site visit and I don't feel um, inclined to be real permissive on, oh, well, it's already done now and, you know, just come on by and you know, see what we're doing and blah, blah, blah. I just, I don't feel trust, trust towards that. I just, I'm like shocked at how much change went on in this seven years without permission.
All right, other playing board member comments or questions?
I share, um, Meg's feeling of, I'm not. It just doesn't sound right to me to change the permit to make what was done in era, okay. So, it, like her, I'm not inclined to say, sure, no problem. That I think we need to understand what happened and why, and just because it happened doesn't mean we have to make it okay and make it part of the next, you know, the next phase.
And certainly more so, I think we should go out there and see what it is. All right, any other questions or comments from the board? If not, I am gonna open it up to, um, the public, uh, so let's start with Mark, for just.
Hi, guys, long time no see. Uh, I got, I got multiple issues with this project, uh, one, it kind of gives me a little, um. Pizza house thing where the guy did something and now you stopped him and he's trying to, trying to, uh, you know, trying to get away with it. Uh, but the problem with this here is that when, when, when he first applied for his permit uh, and received it, it was supposed to be, no work was supposed to be done until, you know, it was approved and everything else was, you know, done, nothing with no excavations. And, and now what he's done is he's cleared the lot, done whatever he wanted to do. And now I see a direct impact on how, how much more traffic is going up and down that road. Uh, now, he says it's Brandsfield Street Farm, but, uh, he's leasing to all kinds of other people down there, is what I believe. Uh, maybe you can ask him the question, who's actually leasing down there right now? Uh, but this, this, you know, tow trucks and, and dump trucks and uh, matter of fact, we had a dump truck that broke down at the corner of White Pond Road and, 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 uh, one seventeen the other day. And they brought a, a backhoe, a huge backhoe, and they dragged the thing back down to his property. Uh, yeah, th- this is not respectful of the neighbors and what's going on and the increase that he's trying to do now on top of what he's already done. To me is just obscene. I just can't see how this can possibly go through. Uh, I think you should make him put it back the way it was and then apply for a permit again and try and make it, try and make it right. Cause right now, this is not right. This is not the way the town should be treated by, by resident or a business because, you know, they should be fixing this. This, this is you know, let me do it and then ask for forgiveness is what he's, what he's done. And ignorance of the law, like you said, Lori, is, is, is not the way to do things. Um, that's my opinion right now and if I get any more questions, I'll let you know. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, let's go to Jenna S. Apologies for not being able to call on you the last public hearing, but if, uh, do you wanna make a statement?
Jennifer Spurlo, White Pond Road. I don't know why we would offer another special permit when he didn't follow the rules of the original permit. I'd like to know what the vehicle limits actually are. And I'd like to know if the blue tarp, which is serving as a fence, um, was temporary or if that was something that needed to be, um, made permanent. And, um, there's no point in talking about a sidewalk. There are no sidewalks on White Pond Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenna. Uh, Laura Corbin?
Hi, this is Laura, uh, ten White Pond Road. Um, yeah, I have a few comments, um, I think, uh, perhaps the applicant does not know that he is having an impact on White Pond Road. The, um, the traffic is not only increased, but the, the trucks that are coming down the road are enormous and loud. And, uh, they often pause right at one seventeen. I don't know if they're checking their GPS or what, but they just sit there sort of spewing out the exhaust. It's very noisy. Um, some of the truck drivers have been very gracious. Others are less safe. Uh, White Pond Road is a road that's frequented by walkers, families, dogs. People going down to the river and the bird sanctuary. And these giant trucks that take up the entire road are a hazard to that use. Uh, also, there's a lot of trash on the road, um. I pick it up every year, um, and, and my neighbor as well picks it up every year. And this isn't residential trash that ends up on the road. It's nips and bottles, vape cartridges, soda bottles with dips fit in it. You know, this kind of thing is not respectful of your neighbors, so I just wanted to make those points. Also, I do question, and I, I leave it as an open question, honestly. Whether those hours of operation are being met because I make early morning walks and I've definitely seen trucks come in and out of there before six AM.
All right, thank you, Laura.
That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Let's go to Dorothy.
Um, hi, I'm thankful that the, uh, planning board is asking for more information about uh, the history of why there's been more done and um, I'm hoping it's clarified exactly how much was cleared, um, for the next, I think this will be continued. I would like to say that the traffic has definitely increased and would like the planning board to consider how with the lower village building, um, by like changes done with a emphasis on he- heading towards a more pedestrian oriented area and taking consideration the conservation land around. White Pond Road is narrow, it's turn, a lot of turns, hilly. And there was an increase, uh, with traffic, pedestrian and bicycles. And it has continued, um, but I don't see that being safe at all, especially for people with children or older people, it's just not. And I would like to also add, there has been a huge impact. I felt safer walking down the road with my horse when Astro Crane was there than I do now. In fact, the landscapers have prevented me from walking my horse. I stick with my goat and I shouldn't have to do that legally. I have the right of way with my horse, but they just fly. Absolutely fly down that road. It's, I mean, acceleration right at great road. And then, uh, or the brakes, but it, it's just does not fit with the road and the increase at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dorothy. Let's go on to Molly.
Uh, so Molly and Greg here.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay. You couldn't know. Uh, twenty-nine White Pond Road. Uh, just wanted to kind of echo some of what everybody else has been saying about increased traffic. Um, and kind of the unsafe behavior coming from some of these trucks. Uh, we have two small children and we love going to walk down to the conservation land and the, the Asbet um, park and everything in the, in the rail trail. Um, we've often had to kind of scoot over to the, to the side where there's lots of poison ivy and everything. Uh, to get out of the way of, especially if there's two sets of trucks going in opposite directions. Um, I've also been, uh, kind of, uh, impacted that we usually back into our driveway and if there's a landscape truck that's behind me. I've almost been hit a few times because I have to, to kind of stop and back up, even if I have my blinker on, they don't care, they're just trying to get past me. Um, and so it's just kind of a lot of little instances and I, you know, I haven't had any problems with Jonathan. I haven't brought any of this up to Jonathan. Uh, so, you know, maybe he's, he's unaware of some of this and, and I apologize that this is the, the first time we brought this up, uh, with you, but, um. Uh, yeah, so I, I, I think it's just, it, it's worth looking into, uh, weight limits and traffic on the road to see. Um, uh, what happens with that. It, just a specific instance, we had this guy on a green motorcycle who I know was coming out of uh, the Brandsfield, uh, parking lot. I could see him, I could hear him revving his engine all the way up the road. He was, must have been going fifty, sixty, seventy miles an hour. I, I had to run out in the road and stop, stop him and tell him to slow down at one point. Um, I haven't seen him recently, but, uh, that's just kind of a, uh, kind of a disrespectful, uh, incident that happened.
Thank you, Greg. Um, I believe everyone who had their hand up was called upon, um. Mark, did you have a second round?
I do. Uh, one of the things I want to mention is that I have to walk across the street at the corner of White Pond Road to get my mail. And these trucks, these huge trucks from flying around from, uh, more, more so from the, coming from towards the shaws, it's the lower village side. They come around that corner, they don't even slow down, they go right across. If I don't watch my back all the time, I'm afraid I'm gonna get killed. Uh, the other question I'd like for the board to, to, to look into is, uh, years ago when Malone was putting their, uh, construction site down in bottom of the street there, they weren't allowed to use White Pond Road because of the size of the vehicles and things like this. Um, they had to put their own road in. I, I'd like to know the reason why they did and why Brandsfield has, you know, has the right to, the, the, hi- his, his operations five times more hazardous than what Malone's is. Uh, vehicles are going up and down all the time. It may be, uh, me, Brandsfield's, uh, tree company, but certainly the leasing people that he's dealing with right now is, uh, are very hazardous and none of them are done by five o'clock. Maybe the tree company is, but you get these other companies that are there and they're coming after five o'clock, sometimes seven, eight, nine, ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night. And there's, there's no limits to what, you know, what they're doing because they're doing whatever they want.
So I, I do have a question for, I don't know if Chris or Jonathan who wants to answer, but how much of um, the business at traffic in here is due to Brandsfield Tree versus how much of it are other businesses releasing to? And, uh, curiosity of how many other businesses?
Yeah, well, sorry, um, we have, uh, we have eight other people that are in there. Uh, other tree guys like me, a landscape guy and a, a perennial supply people and, um. A, uh, scaffolding, scaffolding guys and, and Mike, none, none of them are hu- huge trucks. Actually, the biggest truck that comes and goes is, is mine. Uh, everybody else, they're, they're one ton and three quarter ton drop dumps. Um, so I, I don't, there's, you know, there's other businesses on White Pond Road that, that put trucks on the road as well. Um, there are several other locations where the, where the, in the, in the commercial zone where they're coming from. But in terms of the, the, the head count, I could, I can get, I, I can give that to you. I don't have that.
Yeah, I think it would be interesting to understand, um, how many businesses are in here and sort of your forecast on, um, traffic volume, um, with each of those besides your own. Uh, would be interesting to us. Um.
Yeah, I, I, I welcome it. I know we have, um, I know that we're within the, the, the special permit that I got in twenty sixteen for the amount of car trips that come into from, from the site of.
Okay.
I paid a lot of attention to it, so I, I, I am, I'm open to that conversation for sure, I'm.
All right, um, let's go to Katie Fisher.
Okay, so I wasn't, okay, nevermind.
Katie?
I just, I haven't seen this plan up close and I just noticed, where's the well? I see a, uh, pump house for irrigation on the top of the plan.
It's up by White Pond Road.
So the drinking well is by White Pond?
Yeah, it's in between the building and White Pond Road, I believe.
Oh, okay, so that was, that's my first question. My next question is, did the, um, if you go south down, there's a residential rental right below.
Yep.
Um, has the, uh, Board of Health signed off on all the plans for septic and well here? Have they been notified?
They have been notified. We are working through their comments and concerns.
Okay, so it's on their agenda. Very good, thank you.
All right, um, let's see, Dorothy, did you have another round?
Yes, a question is something that I'm not. Real familiar with and wanted to understand. So. On that property, there's an area. It's called the hydrologic connection, which is, I guess, where. Surface and and groundwater meet. And it seems like that. That. Is right where they're having all the runoff go to, and although it's gonna, there will be a filter there. I'm just wondering if that would be. You know, what would. Normally be recommended is to have runoff head towards a specifically known area where. There's a connection between ground. Water and surface water.
And we can certainly have our, ask our engineer to comment on that.
Great.
I know we haven't gotten her comments yet, but certainly that can be a question.
And one other thing I wanted to add just for the people that did this report for him, and I don't know if it's of an impact or not. It it was not just sort of a small amount of horse use. There is decades and decades of. Just. Stockpiled manure in bedding with a higher, it would have a much higher nitrogen rate. Than one would expect because of how much the horses were kept in stalls on the bedding. And so. Yeah, I know, how much is already probably just leached out into the 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 river, what more, but that's what is there. Is, you know, historically, tons and the one. Other. That was. It, I guess it would be helpful. To, again, if before the next meeting, it was provided online from the applicant. You know, a map of what was there, what they've. Done. And what they should have done because reading this information from. The engineer now, when it says, well, we're going by what was there. You know, and it's not taking into consideration what's gone on. It makes it confusing to understand what is happening at the site. For sure.
Chris, I was Anderson, I wonder if you can just give us a quick estimate of if the original site. Clearing was supposed to be one and a half acres. How many, how much land is now cleared? On this site?
With over five acres.
Okay. Um, let's see, Greg, I'll get to you, Meg, next.
Hi, thank you. So maybe just a clarifying question. I thought I saw somewhere in the application. That there was talk of a traffic study for the road, but that there, it was deemed that there wasn't enough. There wasn't a high enough number of vehicles going down the road to to warrant that. Is that something?
For the two thousand sixteen application.
Okay. Is there any way that we can, I don't I don't know how this works, if we can call for a traffic study to to kind of determine what's happening right now?
Well, I think that. You know, it's certainly one of the reasons why we asked for, let's get a an inventory of businesses and the. Potential impact each one has from a vehicle standpoint so that we can assess that.
Okay, so it's so. I guess.
My answer to your question is, it is possible. That will be something the board can discuss and certainly one of the reasons why I ask to get an inventory.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Meg?
Yeah, I have two questions. Is there any possibility? I mean, I'm just thinking about the traffic. And anyway, you. Play it. There is increased truck traffic on that road. So what is the possibility of of you and all the businesses that are located on this property to use Malone's? Road, like, would you ever be, would it be possible to get into agreement so all your trucks do not use White Pond Road and they went out Malone's Road?
I've I've actually, I've I've a wonderful relationship with the Malones, me and Peter especially. And they are absolutely loathe to entertain that idea. They seem pretty clear about that.
All right.
Okay, and my second question is, okay, so. We permitted one point five acres. You say now that you've cleared five acres. You, this property is ten point three three acres. I know that there are buffers around, but how do we know that you're not just gonna expand to as much as you can on these ten acres now? And until, I mean, you got bagged for clearing this site. Which is why you're even here tonight for what you've done on the five acres now. So I just, I'm not. I'm not real comfortable with what your sense is of how much more expansion you're gonna do on this property.
So if if you look at the plan, you'll see that. That it extends out to the hundred foot buffer. And I, you know, I I. There's nowhere to go, like, there's no, there's, you know, that's. That's the limit and and. I mean, I'm a, I do a lot of professionally wetland work, wetland reclamation and basic control and. That whole back area I have been stewarding to become. A, a, you know, an invasive free native. Plant and and insect friendly space. So that that back area is my kind of personal. You know, passion project. To be a native space and to be a diverse wildlife space. So the upland area is the is the sacrifice. You know, in terms of forest, to 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 make the property frankly. Financially feasible. I mean, I didn't move on to the property necessarily with this idea. But when the cost of, you know, even building a little. Tin can of a four thousand square foot garage is up to one point two million. You know, more of the property needed to be brought in. To make that all work, unfortunately, it's it's. It's like I said at the outset of the meeting. I've I've never owned a property like this. I've never tried to manage this kind of a, you know, financial reality. And and so that's it. That's the limit. That's as far as it can go is is out to where that that red line is a hundred foot buffer. And, I mean, I would, I would say. Whenever you want to come on board, whenever anyone, I mean, I'm I'm open to have people come on and and and, you know, be. Be witness to what goes on after this. You know, you're right. I I I kind of backed myself into this situation. It's not fun. You know, I'm not, I'm not enjoying. Let me just say that, like, it's not a position that I want to be in. You know, I don't want to be in this position again. I would love to just settle this property. Get it squared away in the eyes of the 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 planning board and the Conservation Commission. And 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 have it be settled, you know, I don't. I don't wanna, I don't want to get bagged again. How's that sound?
All right, Jenna, did you have an additional comment?
Yes, I would like to know what the vehicle limits are. And if there are weight limits on White Pond Road. I feel like we're not just talking about truck traffic. These are employees coming to and from work. In the morning and we see a lot of speeding cars as well.
Yeah, it's eighty-four on the from twenty sixteen, it was estimated to be eighty-four plus or minus average daily trips per weekday. And and I know that we're well under that in terms of the amount of vehicles that come and go. So. You know, and there's there's also just a lot more going on in the six years that I've been on White Pond in general, you know. Going on, a lot more people go down to the Wildlife Refuge and a lot more people go down track road. To the airport. There's a lot more people on the road.
I can also speak to that question of the weight limit on the road. So I did check in with the police chief and he confirmed that there is no weight limit on White Pond Road.
Thanks, Valerie. Dorothy, did you have an additional comment?
I was, I wanted to know if the landscapers are doing the maintenance on their equipment at the property. Where it's gonna be, you know, it's pervious. That's not the. It's not best for oil and what more to be done, although that's not. I think it's not a protection area for drinking water. It is so close to the wetlands.
Yeah, no, no, there's no, it's strictly strictly prohibited to do any kind of oil changing. Or anything like that, painting, anything like that. It's it's strictly for storage. Is the usage that that people that that people sign on for.
And so they they take. Their, I mean, I know landscapers, so they they take those. Their equipment elsewhere. Because they're not paying someone to do the oil changes.
A lot of these, the people that are there from a landscaping perspective, they all have other sites. Right? So they have other places and except for one. The way that it gets used, the way that it's used for, so there's masons and they they mostly store. You know, pallets of pavers and things like that, and they store, like, they'll store their plows there in the in the summer months and then they'll put the, and, you know, so that their winter equipment is there for the summer. And their summer equipment is there in the winter. It's it's used a lot like that. We've tried to engineer it towards storage. We've tried to engineer it towards minimizing daily trips. And that's, and I I think we've been pretty successful.
Okay, and I just, in my perspective, when you're talking about other businesses on the road. There's actually less traffic. To. Of the app, like former Astro complex than there was before. So that's taken away from, like, and, I mean, there's just story brick down there, there. There, I found them to be very respectful of the speed limit and what more. So I don't know what other increase you're talking about coming from elsewhere.
The Dudley property, the Dudley property has several people. And they're doing exactly the same thing in terms of contractor yard.
Okay, that's pretty small. I'll I'll check because. My friend sold that property and she's right there because it means I know they have sort of a lot of stuff sitting there. But I don't. I don't. I'll have to just find out actually who's going in and out so we don't confuse it with your property. But that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, Meg?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, this is a legal question for the planning board, is are we allowed to limit the hours of operation?
Valerie, do you want to weigh in?
Yes, you know, within within reason, and I think the. I think the existing special permit may have done so. I can take a look through and and see.
Yeah, it's conditioned exterior activity shall generally take generally take place between the hours of six AM. And five PM Monday through Friday and eight AM to twelve PM on Saturdays. That that word generally, I think, is is applicable. Hardly anybody's out of there before six. And you're right, there are afternoon, late night stragglers that come in, but. I'd say, you know, that's a that's a spare fraction of of. The usage.
Meg, did you have an additional question?
Yeah, I mean, that was a little bit of a. Murky answer for me. I mean. You know. You have stragglers, like, you know, that's. Stragglers coming in after five PM, you know, or stragglers going out before six AM. I mean. Where does a straggler stop being a straggler and when is it really kind of routine? And that's what I would like to protect the residents against.
Yeah, I think, you know, snowstorms are gonna make all sorts of odd hours happen. People come and go in snowstorms, just like for us when there's. Blowdown events, you know, we'll have to send crews out at. Whenever, you know, two, three o'clock in the morning, that's pretty rare. And I think most, most people, you know, well, most everybody I know, you know, they work. Six, seven AM until four, five PM. I think during leaf blowing season. There's, there's one, there's one person that shares the property. Who is. A straight up landscaper, you know. And so they are gonna be doing leaf blowing, you know, sometimes that goes late into the into the night for those guys. But everybody, you know, I mean, no one's really working fourteen hour days. They're working ten hour days, so they're out of the yard by six or seven and they're back by four or five.
So just one thing, I do want, we are. Heading towards a continuance, I believe, so I do want to try to wrap things up. One thing I will say to the playing board is, you know, we've had some past discussions of contractors yard and I would say. That's been a theoretical conversation. I think this. Offers some reality to what a contractor's yard is. So I think from a planning board perspective, I would like to take us. This away as a learning. Opportunity to understand what a contractor's yard is, especially when we go and visit as well. So I guess, Mark and Dorothy, do you have new comments or questions? Let's just try to wrap it up real quick. Mark?
Yes, I got two two more questions. The first is, in the permit that he's asking for. He's not showing where the cars are being stored or the trucks are being stored. This is all gonna be stored on impervious tire of some kind of cement that won't allow any leakage from the vehicles to go into the ground, I would assume. But as he's talking about putting re-ground tire there, which is not impervious to the to oil leakage. The second question I have is, or the second comment I have is, that his well that he's saying is gonna be a. Private well and not a public water supply. I believe the public water supply says. Anything over twenty-four people entering the property needs to have a public water supply. I believe that the people going in and out of the property for leasing are also counted into that into that that number as they're going in and out every day. I think the 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 planning board should look more into that. Number on how that should actually play out, whether it actually is a. Actually needs a public water supply, because I believe it does.
We can get clarity on that. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, Nancy.
Um, I actually looked that up, Mark, and I think the number was twenty-five. Is for the. Public water supply, but we can look it up. The other thing I just wanted to throw out in general, as we're talking about contractor yards. I know the discussion is all on Brandsfield Tree here, but there are two other locations on White Pond. Really kind of doing the same thing, and I'm curious, they have special permits, if we have any idea. How many trucks are in there or all these other rules applying to them as well? And I think when we go down to do a site visit, we should. Look around and see what the whole situation is down there. That's all I wanted to say.
All right.
I think that's a good idea, Nancy. Thank you.
Uh, Mary Mintz? Mary, did you have a comment? Or maybe it's not Mary, but your screen says Mary?
No, it's me. I'm sorry. I was on. I I was, I'm hopeful that when you come to do a site visit, that you will also see the state of the road. And and you've heard the concerns about the size of the vehicles and the speed with which many, many vehicles, and I know, you know, Chris is trying to. And there are, everybody's trying to be respectful of the residents on the road, but there is no respect in the way that people are driving and. I don't know whether it's appropriate to have some kind of traffic study done and that includes public safety because I believe if that were done. People with young children would have reason to have pause for concern. And and I don't have younger children, but I walk a dog and I walk my grandsons and I am concerned every time I walk down White Pond Road now, and that didn't used to be the case.
All right, thank you, Mary. Um, all right, so based on the fact that we don't have our engineers' comments yet, I assume you're open to a continuance? Jonathan?
Yes, please.
Okay. Valerie, when. Knowing that we want to get a sidewalk in there too before the hearing, when would you propose?
Yes, we also want to make sure that the applicant has time to respond to. Our peer reviewers' comments so that it is not just.
Right.
So we have a meeting next on September nineteenth. John, are you, you're not gonna be available at that meeting, is that correct?
That is correct.
So perhaps September twenty-sixth. If that would work for you all. We can try to fit in a a site visit ahead of time and we'll likely schedule it. As we did with cottages, so a few different site visits so that we don't have a quorum of members at a single time. And I think it would also be helpful. To have our peer reviewer join us at one of those sidewalks as well so she can get a sense of.
I agree.
Okay.
All right, so is Jonathan, is September twenty-sixth okay?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, if um, do you have any sense of what the the time may be? I I have a dentist appointment that I I can move, obviously, this is more important, but. Um, if I don't have to move it, uh, based on when you'll be there, I wouldn't.
Oh, no, no, we're talking about the continuance of the hearing, we'll, we'll, we'll with you on the sidewalk, don't worry.
Sorry. Yeah, 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 of course, of course, Tuesday.
Okay, so this would be in the evening.
Yep. Thank you, yep.
All right, uh, with that, I'd like to hear a motion to continue.
I made that we.
You go, John.
I move that we continue the hearing to September, what would you say, twenty-sixth at seven thirty?
Second.
All right, anyone else have any comments before we take a vote? All right, so we will vote on the continuance. Uh, Debbie?
Yes, I, I.
Nancy?
I.
Meg?
I.
John?
I.
And I. All right, thank you everyone for attending. Um, if you are not able to make September twenty-sixth, please feel free to send comments. Um, to the planning office and uh those will be on record as well. All right. Okay, those were uh our two official uh agenda items tonight. Um, I guess I would ask if anyone from the planning board. Um, or staff has any other uh housekeeping topics uh we need to discuss before we look to adjourn.
You know, I, I'm gonna say this, um, we keep hearing this repeated about traffic. You know, and I, I, I feel like just in terms of just me as a person. Um, I just, I feel like Stowe is getting more and more crowded. So I do not get why, as a town, like, maybe we should start thinking about. How we want to think about traffic and how we want to deal with um with trucks and speed and it's like. Our houses are here and it's like, how are we gonna deal with the change and how do we respect that? Vehicles can go through, but how can we control the way that vehicles go through and the volume of of tr- and I just, I feel like as a town. We really need to talk about that, you know, it's like we just hear it on every single project, I feel like, and it's, it's an issue, you know, and it's, it's like, it's not. It's like if we're on a planning board, I feel like we should be thinking about the future and and actually planning ahead and putting things in place that. Will continue to let us have safety and let us be able to still walk on our roads that we have always walked on. I just, you know, anyway, that's me.
And I do think if people think there's a bigger picture topic there, I do think that's something we would want to discuss with the select board and or complete streets because. The planning board um isn't necessarily the uh authority on um. How roads are handled. I know we tend to deal with traffic issues related to specific applications or projects. That we go after, uh, but I do think it's a whole town discussion, not necessarily planning board discussion.
Agreed, but we could also start it.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, anything else? Anything else from you, Valerie?
No, no, that's it.
All right, then I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Did we have the motion?
No, Lauren, make the motion, make the motion, Meg.
Oh, I make the motion adjourn, I thought Lauren did.
Um, great, before we do adjourn, I guess, um, just a quick uh question, Valerie, is um. To see if there's anything big on the docket next week?
Let me um take a look.
Just to give people a heads up.
Yeah, um, yeah, not, not too much, no public hearings next week.
Okay, um, yeah, that's more what I was asking.
Yep.
All right, then everyone have a good night and I'll see you next week.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you, have a good night.